Call to order the West Orange Board of Education meeting for December 11th, 2018, right here at West Orange High School. Mr. Calvano will back on the record in open session.
Right, I just want to make a comment that we added another confidential item under section three, or number three. We added HIB case 090-001. And the only other item we were able to get through is number eight, employee number 4290. So we still have the balance of the confidential resolution to go to finish. And we'll be, at the end of this meeting, we'll be going back to the confidential to complete those items.
Thank you, Mr. Calvano, for the update and for the public. Next on the agenda, I need a motion to accept the close on public minute meetings from November 20th, 2018. I need a motion to move those.
I'll move it.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Calvano?
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the reports from the students.
So, we have a couple of updates today. Our dispensers for feminine hygiene are up and running in PVW and Conforty buildings. And, excuse me, in Tarnoff, they're in the process of being put up and filled up. Specific janitors will constantly refill the dispensers in specific locations throughout the building. Nurses are in charge of keeping stock and making sure that tampons and pads in the nurses' office, security office, and gym teachers in the locker rooms are filled up. And we need an update on the dispensers for Tarnoff Building and what the status of the dispensers is currently.
On the topic of bus transportation, we wanted to stress the importance and of a bus app, or the, we mentioned the AVL system, is that what it was called? Yeah, we wanted to keep pushing for that and make sure that that's still on the table and still in consideration. We will be sending out surveys to get more data on overcrowding and optimizing bus routes as well. And for bus passes, we still want an update if they're being sent out, if they've already been sent out.
Okay.
Our website is currently up and running, and we are getting student input from our website as well, so we're taking those, handling those one by one. We would like some kind of letter or message also to the parents and students to see if they can, if we can put our website out there, because we are getting responses and they have been effective, but there's only very few, and I feel like there's more to say from the students.
Do you want to share what the URL is?
It's a specific site. It has to have a link, and it's only accessible by West Orange students, but it's in the West Orange Student Council Instagram bio if students want to see over there.
Okay. Got it.
Also, parents can, if parents have complaints, they can encourage their students to go on the website and address their complaints there.
Okay.
In terms of, and it also works for, it works for all grades, it's not just high school students. Middle school and elementary school kids can have access to them as well. In terms of the Legionella bacteria, we wanted to know when we'll be able to use the water fountains again without having to go to nurses' offices and the security office for water bottles? And also, is there a timeframe for how long water bottles will be available?
We wanted to give a couple of quick shout-outs to our West Orange High School Student Council. So, we have a couple of students up for awards and some recognition. We have Salam Walda, she's up for, she's up for award for High School Student Leader of the Year for she, for her efforts organizing our schools for Screen Ribbon Week and initiating a world, a school-wide mental health awareness week. As well as sophomore Ryan De Vera, who secured his position as Vice President of the New Jersey Association of Student Council this year. It was just a statewide position, and we're very proud of him, so we want to congratulate him on that. And both of these things will be announced at our winter conference, and we'll be attending at NJIT on January 9th, 2019. Sorry, TCNJ, my bad. Yeah. Oh, and our scriptist, English National Learning Society, will be having a Poetry Out Loud event coming up soon, so we want to put that out there. It's open to all students.
Our last issue, in the beginning of the year, I know Mr. Robertson addressed a delay on the school timing, just addressing that, so we wanted to ask about the progress of that and where it stands, and see if we can get a later, maybe not now, but for next year, a later timing, so maybe like even 15 minutes, that can really make a difference for the students, so 2:7:45.
Okay. Thank you for another great report. Not to steal Superintendent Mendez's thunder here, but she has, I'm sure, in her superintendent report, a lot of answers for you, which I believe you guys are going to be very excited about, so we'll turn over to the superintendent and have reports.
Sure. Good evening. I'm going to go over some key action steps when we're thinking about emergency planning and our transportation update. The first task we've been working on is updating emergency contact information, so forms have been developed to update all emergency contact information to include contacts for early dismissals. So those forms will be going out to parents within the next two to three weeks. They will go out from the schools, they will be returned back to the principal, and then the school will update our system so that we have all contacts, including early dismissal contacts, current. This is important before we move on to making early dismissal decisions. However, early dismissal procedures are also being developed. A draft has been developed to include updating contact information, range of weather conditions that make call for an early dismissal, and after that contact information has been updated, the procedures will be posted and shared with all parents and guardians. We're looking to have that happen by January. In the area of transportation, we are continuing to explore various technology packages for our buses, to include geofencing, geo-tracking, student ID passes, and mobile applications. We currently have equipment on some of our buses with a provider, and therefore, we've reached out to that provider, we've met with them, we've met with them in conjunction with Hunnerton. We've been awarded a grant of $23,000 in order to receive all of the hardware for the grant cost, and we would have to pay the subscription cost. So the subscription cost would be $35 a month per bus. We met with Hunnerton ESC, which is the majority of our buses, and they've agreed to come on board with us and pay the subscription for their buses. So we have about 32 buses, John, and they have 120-something buses. So, right now, we are still in conversation because before we bring it to the board, we want to make sure this is the right company and that we vet it against other companies. However, that grant money is there, it's available. If so, what does that mean, ladies, and to the public? That means that we would be able to have the ADL on the buses. We'd be able to see on a map, on a web-based system, where all of the buses are, the speed, the address, real-time. This is Administration and Transportation Department that I'm speaking of. We went on to a webinar, we were able to see all of our buses. It was a very interesting feature. Geofencing also is available, which means, let's say a bus has to take an alternate route for whatever reason, and they go off-track, then it will signal us, and then we can see that that bus is off-road. Student ID passes are available, which means that a student would enter the bus, tap to swipe on, tap to swipe off. That would let us know what buses the students are on instantly, when they enter or exit the bus through the front door, the time, the location, and we could pull instant data. The mobile applications are available for pushing out messages to parents to say, "Your bus is going to be late." It would be instant. So I'm a principal, bus 338 is running behind five minutes. On my Android phone, they don't do iPhones, right, but on my Android phone as a principal, I can say, "Send a message to all parents, 338 is running five minutes late." We have to very much consider the idea of having people track buses. Right now, we're not in a position to do that for the public, so we would be able to potentially use the app to say, "We've left the high school," or "We've arrived at our destination," but not everybody being able to see the bus stop by stop. It's not because the app doesn't have the ability, but we have to think about confidentiality. And there are a lot of considerations that we have to really think out well before we do that. And so, once we have that feature really fleshed out, then we can have a presentation on that. The app, however, does allow for administrators, transportation department, to instantly see where buses are from any location. So let's say, an athletic team was practicing in the evening, the principal's already at home, mom, I can't, you know, my daughter, she's still not home, or my son, then the principal from wherever he or she is on their app can see if the child is, has entered or exited the bus. So that's where we are with transportation. We're excited about the possibility, we're excited about the grant, we're excited that we're able to, if the board approves this direction, that we'd be able to have this up and running by January or February. Again, we do want to vet it out just a little bit more. In terms of emergency planning manuals, the district and school leadership are in the process of updating all emergency planning manuals. We have two meetings scheduled for January and two meetings scheduled for February. The committee meetings will include walkthroughs and assessments of all buildings by the New Jersey Department of Education's Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning. So I've met with Mr. Gambino from the NJ DOE. He's preparing to come to the district. We'll visit three schools per day, we'll go, we'll take a risk assessment, and we'll work that into the emergency planning. Once those emergency plans are complete, we're projecting by March, we will review all procedures, we will bring it to the board for approval, we'll have those posted, we'll begin formal training and communication with our parents, and then that is the update for emergency planning.
Thank you.
For the special education audit.
Do you want to do the Legionella update, and we'll take it before the presentations?
Sure. So, Legionella update. So, I'm going to start from the beginning with simply just defining Legionella. Specifically, there's a bacteria, Legionella pneumophilia, and it's SG1. And that's specific because on our reports, we have different bacteria that appear, and the one that we're looking for that could potentially cause Legionnaires is the SG1 Legionella pneumophilia. It's a bacteria found in water, can cause Legionnaires' disease. Why are we testing for pneumophilia? Earlier this year, a parent reported that her child had contracted Legionella at Redwood. That was an unconfirmed case, the student did not have Legionnaires. We have no confirmed cases of Legionnaires in our district at all. In response, however, to be proactive, the board asked us to have all of our schools tested, and we began to do so. We began with Redwood on August 2nd. Of the 14 areas tested, three tested positive. There was a chlorination process put in place to remediate that water at Redwood, and the school has been cleared. So Redwood does not have Legionella detected. It's commonplace in New Jersey, and it is commonplace to see Legionella bacteria in water in large buildings, in older buildings. The fact that Legionella was found in our water systems does not automatically mean that the drinking water is a source for Legionnaires' disease. It is normally contracted by inhaling small droplets of water, aerosols, that are suspended in the air that contain the bacteria. So examples of that would be a shower, a cooling tower, and a hot tub, all three of which are present at our high school, and that's why our high school is an area that we are aggressively remediating. This is an important statement that was made by Teresa De Nova, our township Department of Health. I spoke to the Department of Health today again to confirm, and the statement is the following: "Legionella is not contagious person-to-person. It is not airborne. It cannot be contracted by drinking or touching water, and the way it is contracted is by inhaling contaminated mist." So the question that parents are asking is, "Is the water safe?" Healthy people exposed to Legionella in drinking water are at little risk, if any. Drinking water poses a risk to select individuals, and these are the categories that we've been given: those who are 50 years or older, those who have lung disease, current or former smokers, alcoholics, those who have underlying immune deficiency diseases such as chronic respiratory disease, kidney disease, diabetic, and cancer, and an organ transplant recipient. So anyone who falls into these categories is at a higher risk than a healthier person, but still at a very low risk for contracting Legionnaires because it is not readily contracted via drinking water. It's still contracted via an aerosol. The example the Health Department gave was the only way that they would really say you could get Legionnaires from drinking water is if you choke and you aspirate and you emit a mist, right, and you'd still have to have a compromised immune system. So that's the example they gave. How is Legionella entering our water system? The water enters our system from the township, it's provided through New Jersey American Water, and while they do go through a chlorination process and meet the Clean Water Act, we do believe, and our consultants have said, that an element of Legionella has to be coming from the outside in. It's further compounded by the plumbing in our older buildings because we have dead ends. So if there's plumbing that doesn't have an outlet and the water doesn't completely flush through, then it provides an opportunity for Legionella to grow. Hence, the answer to, "Well, why aren't you shutting down the water fountains?" Right? If we shut them down, then we exacerbate the problem. Now we allow for Legionella to grow in those areas. And we have not been told that the drinking water from the water fountain will cause Legionnaires, right? It's not a mist. However, those who are in those high-risk categories, we are providing the water. So to your question about, "How long will we provide the water for?", we're currently in remediation for the high school in particular, in Edison. So at the high school, we will continue to provide that water to anyone who fits into those categories and/or is uncomfortable with drinking the water that we have available. It is important to note that anyone with those specific conditions shouldn't drink tap water anywhere. It is not just here in West Orange, it's tap water anywhere in your home if you have a compromised immune deficiency. The third thing is, any plumbing that is infrequently used is also an area where Legionella will grow, i.e. our showers. So we have some showers that are commonly used by our students and others that are never used, and that's where we found Legionella testing positive. And so then, what have we done? We've turned off all of the showers, we've taken off the 68 showerheads to replace them because they could be holders of bacteria. We've put Nefros filters on all of the showerheads that we will continue to use, so we're going to take some out of circuit because the students don't use them. And if they don't use them, then it'll continue to harbor the bacteria. And so, right now, the showers are turned off, the showerheads have been removed, new showerheads are going in, filters have gone in, and it will be a select number of showers. We've put a filter on the hot tub. A hot tub is a misting area, right? So a filter has been put there. Questions about our kitchen? Our kitchen tested not detected, so it did not test positive. Are our schools free from Legionella? The schools that have been tested and did not show any evidence of Legionella are Betty Madalena, Kelly, Liberty, and the Bus Garage. Letters went out to parents when they were tested back in August and September, so those parents have been informed. There were another set of schools that were tested, there were positives found, and they were chlorinated. Those schools are Redwood, Washington, Saint Cloud, Mount Pleasant. After the chlorination, it was found that it was successful, and there is no more evidence of Legionella in those areas that were retested. Roosevelt Middle School, there is one shower in the boys' locker room. We replaced the showerhead, and it came back not detected. Hazel Elementary, there is one faculty restroom sink in the library, it is being chlorinated tomorrow again. It is, a filter has been placed on it, and it will be retested on December 13th. Gregory Elementary School, there is one left sink in the boys' restroom across from 207. Today, it was chlorinated, was it today or yesterday? It was chlorinated, it was today, it was chlorinated. A filter was installed, and it will be retested on December 13th. What does the filter mean? The filter prevents Legionnaires or the bacteria from coming through. So because it tested positive, this is a short-term immediate fix to that sink, okay? Edison Middle School, we have eight outlets that are positive at Edison Middle School. Nefros filters have been installed on all eight outlets on December, on November 30th, and we are retesting on December 13th. Now, an observation, I'm going to go to the high school lastly, an observation was made that all schools that were chlorinated by Omega, the test, the chlorination was successful, and all schools that were chlorinated by Clarity, a separate company, were not as successful. Therefore, for the high school in Edison, since there we have a more pervasive positive result, we're going to chlorinate with Omega, with that company, because they had all of the successful results. Our last and our largest school is the high school. There are 26 outlets that tested positive in the first remediation, and 24 that just tested positive again. So what have we done? Short-term, Nefros filters have been installed in all outlets that have tested positive. The shower rooms have been closed, we talked about that, showerheads off, Nefros filters on. We will only reactivate showers that are commonly used. The kitchen, not detected. We really need to think from, about moving from short-term remediation efforts to long-term because this is not a problem that will go away with the short-term or overnight. And so then, for short-term, we've done the chlorination, we've done the filters, we've removed all aerators from the outlets. The aerators stopped the water from spraying, so all aerators have been removed, and the water will just drop down, so no mist. Communication to staff, parents and guardians will go out tomorrow for the remainder of the schools. The letters have been drafted already, they will go out with the students in their backpacks, and that is because the results just came back on Friday. Long-term remediation efforts. So, to date, the high school in Edison continued to present positive results. One, we need to develop a water management plan to reduce Legionella growth and spread in the school buildings. That will include a program team describing all of our water systems using text inflow diagrams, identifying where it could grow, establishing ways to intervene when the control limits are not met, the, making sure that the temperature of the water as it enters a pipe is the same temperature as when it exits a pipe, and if not, maybe putting heating on the pipes because the water needs to be at a certain temperature to kill the bacteria. Investigating the water filtration on incoming water supply from American Water, what's coming into our buildings. In consultation with a recommending, a recommended plumbing contractor, review the plumbing profile that's in the district, test the water temperatures at all outlets, and explore aggressive hot-water flushing, which would mean, in areas that have tested positive or that are not frequently used, we could flush for 30 minutes once a month and then keep very detailed records. A question was asked, how much have the remediation costs, how much has this cost us so far? We are currently at about $171,000 in cost for remediation efforts. And that concludes the report on Legionella. The reports will be posted on our board website along with this report.
Okay. Excellent report. Can you, can we give an update on CL2, please, before we start the presentations?
Okay. So today was the final day of testing for the elementary schools. We're hoping to get the reports back within two weeks. Regarding the repair of the five-unit ventilators in the classrooms which had high readings at the high school, parts were shipped today, and as soon as the contractor receives them, they will install them immediately. Our engineer met with the director of buildings and grounds, and we viewed the overall building HVAC system. He feels that the contractor's projected replacement cost of $1.2 million is low. And if you recall, we had an outside contractor come in, not an engineer and architect, an outside contractor come in and give us an estimate on what would his cost be to replace them. It was 1.2. The engineer that met with our director of buildings and grounds felt that that was a low number because it did not include work by the general construction, did not include general construction and electrical contractors' work. So based on the recent projects that he has experienced, the HVAC dollar amount for a typical classroom is between $48,000 and $60,000. Based on this information, this total could be doubled. So in the meantime, the recommendation is to make sure all the louvers, ducts, and vents are not blocked. Also, to ensure that the unit ventilators are turned on. Windows and hallway doors should stay open, and I'm not saying the window has to be completely open, but there should be cracks so we can get as much fresh air into the classrooms as possible. So the doors should stay open to increase the fresh air exchange until funding is available for the replacement or repair.
You want to talk about the next week real quick?
Sure. Next week, our board meeting is going to be dedicated to awards and celebration and honors of our students, our staff, and our community members, contributions that have been made throughout our school community. So we invite our parents, we invite our community members to come and celebrate with us. It will be a parade of honors, true, to form, and so then we're very excited. And we will also be saying goodbye to two of our board members, we will be honoring them as well. And so, the time is, start, the time to start will be at 7:00 PM. We will be located in the auditorium of the high school, so we invite you to come.
Okay. So I guess, two left items, the order and the policy, so...
So I'm going to ask the board to go into the audience, and we're going to have Kristin Gogarty, our Director of Special Services, present a special education audit update.
My name is Kristin Gogarty, I'm the Director of Special Services. As Ms. Mendez shared, the presentation this evening is going to provide an update with regards to the Special Education Audit Action Plan. Just to provide some brief background information, the initial Special Ed Audit Action Plan was developed in January 2018, and was presented to the Board of Education at that time. The action plan was developed based on feedback that was given to us through an independent audit that was completed by a firm outside of the district. An update specific to the major activities as part of the Year One goals was presented in May of 2018, so the presentation this evening is going to focus specifically on the Year Two major activities and the progress that we have made to date with those activities. So in looking at Goal One, that's the instructional program, and that's to enhance instructional programs and resources to meet the individualized needs of special education students in pre-K to 12. The first objective is to research and establish effective and appropriate assessments, instructional programs, and resources to meet the individualized needs of students with autism. So in looking at the major activities, and again, these are all of our Year Two, researching effective instructional practices, assessment measures, and developing a comprehensive transition framework. So to date, we have had, the self-contained teachers of students with autism have conducted outside visits to other public school districts as well as out-of-district placements. They visited the Bernards Township School District, the Summit School District, and the Developmental Learning Center. DLC has two campuses, Awarn and New Providence, so the teachers went to both campuses. We did, within the department, myself, Ms. Dees, who is the supervisor, pre-K to 5, and Joan Ribero, who's the supervisor, 6 to 12, developed an evaluation instrument, so when the teachers go to the visits, they can collect common information that's specifically related to the areas that we want to look at. Now that the visits have been completed, we're planning to schedule meetings with the teachers in January to compile the feedback in order to move forward. In addition, and this is, you know, some of the information here is similar because we are also focusing on community-based experiences and daily living activities. The one area here that I do want to focus on is looking at the elementary level, specific to, again, the community-based activities and daily living... specific to, again, the community-based activities and daily living and bringing that down to the elementary level. So the teachers at the preschool level have started to look at what is age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate for the preschool students, and they have identified the bakery as an option, um, as a community-based program for students to visit. So that's something that we are looking to do this year. And the last activity related to Objective One is to develop a comprehensive curriculum aligned to the program philosophy for the self-contained autism program, pre-K to 12. So this is a Year Two, Three goal. Right now, we're looking to, to begin this goal in Year Three. So we're gonna use the remainder of this year to compile the information from the school visits and then start the initial stages of the curriculum writing next year. The second objective is to develop a comprehensive K to 12 curriculum to meet the needs of the students in the Intellectual Disabilities Program. So you'll see some of the, the progress that we've made had, was similar to the previous objective where we had teachers of students with intellectual disabilities visit programs, again, in other public school districts as well as out-of-district placements. So the teachers visited ECLC, the Westfield School District and the Phoenix School District. We also have an evaluation tool for the teachers to use to collect the information that we're looking for in order to, you know, target within our program. We will be also meeting with the self-contained teachers of students with intellectual disabilities in January of 2019 to, again, compile the information here in order to move forward. Another activity for Objective Two is to develop a comprehensive curriculum aligned to the program philosophy for the Intellectual Disabilities Program. This is work that we have started this year. We've identified two teachers at the elementary level and two teachers at the secondary level, and they have started to develop the curriculum specific to English Language Arts. So we're working on K to two and six to eight with a focus on alignment to the DLM essential elements, looking at differentiating the performance-based assessments that are in the units, as well as identifying supplemental materials that would be appropriate for the students as well. The third objective is to evaluate district programs, instructional practices, resources and the professional development structure to ensure the needs of all students are being met. So the major activities are to develop a framework for the delivery of Orton-Gillingham reading instruction. So this has begun this year. We have started the initial implementation of the Orton-Gillingham program, and the teachers providing the Orton-Gillingham instruction are continuing to look at the criteria for identifying students and the framework for that delivery, a very targeted instruction for the students who have decoding and phonological awareness struggles. The next activity, identify a child study team evaluation model. This was something that was completed last year, so our, um, the entire district looked at moving evaluation models and we have shifted to the Danielson framework, and the child study team is being evaluated with that model as well. We have rubrics that are specific to each of the disciplines for the child study team and related service providers. Evaluate the need for support options in world language classes. We've had consultation between the special services supervisor and the world language supervisor to consider support options in world language classes. Again, that support doesn't always have to be a person, but looking at strategies, um, and other modifications that could be given within the classroom. There has been consideration to reduce the class sizes for Spanish I classes at West Orange High School, and an introductory Spanish curriculum is being developed, and this will really be primarily for our students with autism and intellectual disabilities, and that will fulfill the graduation requirements for the students. Examine the current extended school year program. This activity is something that we're gonna be focusing on, you know, as we move through the school year before we approach the extended school year program which begins at the end of June. Explore research-based reading programs at the middle school level for struggling readers. This activity is not just related to special ed students, but general ed students as well. Within the audit, feedback was given to us that general ed teachers also shared concerns about having struggling readers within their classroom and looking for strategies to support them. So there has been collaboration between the special services department and the ELA department. Um, we're also considering options to address struggling readers at the middle school level with the integration of possibly Orton-Gillingham for those students that have targeted decoding or phonological awareness needs. Continue to provide targeted educational opportunities to teachers. Some examples are within this activity, so we have technology, working with students with emotional difficulties and anxiety, behavioral supports and co-teaching. We've had the opportunity to have our district technology integration specialists facilitate ed tech sessions. The special education teachers have been involved in those sessions and have been implementing the different programs and tools within their classrooms as well. The special services department, with the help of the supervisors, facilitated co-teaching professional development to all new co-teaching pairs this year, so that was done between October and November. Um, a focus that we would like to continue to have is working with students with emotional difficulties and anxiety, so that's something that we will be outlining a plan for moving forward. The second goal looks at processing communication. The overarching goal is to clarify and refine department processes and procedures to ensure compliance and quality assurance, as well as maximize proactive, transparent communication. The first objective is to create a detailed special services procedures manual and corresponding training and advisory documents to outline department procedures and ensure compliance with all legal regulations and improve quality assurance across the district. The major activity, establish an accountability system to monitor student progress. This is something that was completed and we're continuing to do this year. So we are continuing to do the progress reporting four times a year. They're done in November, February, April and June, continuing to implement the Fontis and Pennell assessments, K to five, the MAP growth assessments, K to 10. We also have, um, within the preschool curriculum, they do play planning, so that allows us to monitor student growth on a daily basis throughout the year. Develop a special services procedures manual, so this was something we established last year, and when I say "we," I'm talking about the department administration. Uh, we have a multidisciplinary, um, committee that works on, you know, the development of the manual, we've had several meetings. We currently have the same 10 chapters drafted, we're just in the review and revise process. It's a very lengthy and bulky document that we're going through and really trying to, you know, streamline, make clear, concise and user-friendly, so the hope is to have at least a version 1.0 by the conclusion of this school year. Formulate and disseminate training and advisory documents on topics including the IEP process, so eligibility, writing a defensible IEP. Um, so this is something we, um, the special services administration and the West Orange Special Ed Parent Advisory Council co-chairs have monthly meetings. I shared with them a manual that was shared with me by the Morris Union Jointure Committee, it was developed by a committee of directors, and it's a very user-friendly document, it outlines the pre-referral process, referral, determination, eligibility, et cetera. So that's something that we're, they're working on to provide to parents, and, um, it's a document that we can also share with district staff as a resource, uh, for both general ed staff as well as special ed staff. All of our district staff, including general ed teachers and special ed teachers, were provided with PD, which I'm gonna touch upon a little bit later, and they were also given training documents specific to writing comprehensive present levels of achievement and academic performance. Additionally, as I shared earlier, all of the co-teaching pairs, all the new co-teaching pairs were provided with professional development, and the documents and resources that were shared at the training were also given to the teachers at the time of the training for them to reference and utilize moving forward. Establish an effective filing system. This is something that we're gonna continue to discuss this school year. Um, we wanna look at different options, possibly an electronic filing system, but we do have to take into account budgetary considerations with this. So this is really in preliminary stages of discussion. Provide targeted educational opportunities to, uh, general ed teachers, and this was feedback, again, through the audit where general ed teachers feel that they would like additional PD specific to special education, so pre-referral, referral, eligibility, determination. So this is something that we will have to establish a plan for PD moving forward. Provide educational opportunities for parents, guardians, so similar to the last major activity I just shared, um, with a focus on pre-referral, referral, evaluation, eligibility. In February, we, the West Orange Special Ed Parent Advisory Council will be having a monthly meeting, it's their general meeting. At the time of that meeting, uh, special services administration, which includes myself and the two supervisors, will be doing PD on the New Jersey Administrative Code 6A14. Goal Three, staffing roles and responsibilities. The goal is to maximize, understand and communicate the proper use of staff via projections, placement and roles and responsibilities. The first objective, clarify and monitor staff roles and responsibilities via articulation documents, professional development and staff observation. So the major activity here was to provide focused professional development to building administrators specific to the roles and responsibilities of child study team members and related service providers. At the end of last school year, so late June, we did have our special ed attorney provide professional development to the building administrators in the district. And certainly this will continue, you know, throughout this year and moving into next year. Refine the process for utilizing district BCBAs. This, um, was something that was completed last year, so I had the opportunity to meet with our district BCBAs to see, you know, what they were currently being asked to do, you know, put different protocols in place to really maximize their use across the district. We currently have two BCBAs that are split between the 12 buildings, so we wanna make sure that they're being maximized across the district. Goal Four is IEP development and compliance. So this goal is to enhance knowledge and understanding of components of special education legal mandates and individualized education programs to make thoughtful decisions and develop legally compliant IEPs. The objective is to develop a professional development structure to solidify understanding of special ed law, how to write comprehensive present levels of academic achievement and functional performance statements, and how to develop legally compliant IEPs. The major activity here for Year Two is to provide professional development to teachers specific to writing comprehensive present levels of academic achievement and functional performance. This was a huge focus for us moving into this year because we had to train all staff, so pre-K to 12, general ed, special ed, related arts teachers, everybody. So that was primarily completed between September and November. We did have to reschedule the last few into December, but we have completed that professional development. Additionally, myself as well as the two department supervisors are doing weekly random reviews of IEPs, so we pull IEPs, we review the content of the IEPs, we provide feedback to not only the case managers, but also the teachers based on the information that they're including within the present levels, and also the related service providers as well. And the final goal is intervention and referral, and this is to evaluate the current intervention and referral services process for consistency and effectiveness. So the major activities here, research and identify effective instructional programs, interventions that can be implemented and monitored. So we had the opportunity at a leadership meeting to have some of our building leaders share the current protocols that they're utilizing, um, which include the interventions that they can consider at their level. And certainly, they're continuing to identify different instructional, um, programs and interventions that can be implemented and monitored before a referral to the child study team has to be made. And establish a consistent process for monitoring the effectiveness of interventions prior to making that referral. So district leaders in collaboration with the building leaders are considering, you know, different platforms, so an electronic management system to possibly identify interventions and then track the effectiveness of the intervention. So that's right now in the preliminary stages of discussion. So this concludes the Year Two progress update with relation to the Special Ed Audit Action Plan.
Okay, any comments, uh, from the board? We'll talk to Mr. Alpert.
Sure.
Um, I think that was great, it was a terrific update, um, a lot of good progress being made. Couple of specific questions I have for you, or at least one. On Goal One, Objective Two, um, with developing the ELA curriculum, uh, you mentioned K to two and six to eight, but there was nothing specific about three to five, and I just figured I should ask if there's a, if three to five's in great shape or if it's being done later, or...
We're planning to do three to five later. Right now, um, we have two teachers doing each of the curriculums, so we only have two intellectual disabilities teachers at the elementary level, so we have them focusing on the K to two, and we have our two middle school teachers focusing on the six to eight. So once that's done, we'll shift the teachers into the three to five.
Okay, makes sense. Um, great to see some Orton-Gillingham stuff being discussed. Um, I'm really looking forward to seeing the manual when that's all done, the procedures manual, and, uh, the idea of doing PD for parents, I think, is fantastic, I'm looking forward to that presentation. Uh, the other question I have is on the, when you guys are doing your own IEP audits, I'm curious as to what you're finding in currently built IEPs. I know there was a lot of confusion when the audit was conducted because they were going back many years and we had no way of knowing from the data they gave us if the problems were all old or if they were still happening, so I'm curious what you're seeing in currently being produced IEPs.
The one positive comment I'll make is when I look back at the feedback that we had given from last year and even, I would actually probably say later last year, it's a lot of less comments, which means it's a lot of less feedback that we have to give because we're seeing that the components within the IEPs, um, are bulked up, they're including pieces of information that might have not been included previously, for example, statewide and district-wide assessments and standardized assessments, that was an area where the audit, um, the auditors suggested that we include that, so we are doing that now.
Okay, great, thanks.
Ms. Mordecai, anything?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, um, to all three of you and to the supporting staff that helped with this. Couple of questions. On Goal One, Objective Three, where you talked about the graduation requirement, and then on the next page, um, Gold, where you talked about struggling readers. I, I know from my own personal experience that when a special ed student struggling from, with reading, sometimes, um, and I know we did, we went away from this, so I'm glad to see this is coming back, instead of having the student take Spanish or French or another world language, you'd give them extra reading to make sure that they're proficient in reading before you then introduce Spanish or French or something else. Is that the direction that you're going in?
We've had preliminary conversations about it, but no formal decision has been made.
Under Goal Two, you mentioned, um, BCBAs, the IEP data management system, and you mentioned something about the budget. Have you been exploring different, um, data management systems, and what does that look like? Because at the present moment, the board is going to start looking at our budget. I know building-by-building principals have been looking at their budget, so we're going to, we're gonna need those numbers pretty soon.
Yeah, so for the elect, the filing system, um, we're gonna probably explore different options this year. I don't know if we will include it in the budget moving into next year, but hopefully by next year, we can determine if we find an effective system that might be appropriate for the following school year.
Okay, and, um, okay, and for, and for the question about the BCBAs, you mentioned there's two for 12 buildings. Uh, obviously, that's probably not sufficient, so that would be a budgetary item as well, so just to have you keep that in mind. And my last comment, you mentioned the manual, and thank you for working on it. Will you also be doing a cheat sheet for general ed teachers? I'm sure they can't go through the hundred pages of the manual that you're putting together, um, I guess acronyms, of course, IEP is easy, but the other ones like PLEF and PLEF and everything else.
Yes.
So that they know what those are, and, and a flow chart of the whole INRS process.
Yes, so the, the document that I had referred to in the presentation, that was provided by the Morris Union Jointure Commission, that was established by a small committee of directors, and it's a very, um, easy-to-understand, user-friendly guide for special education. So that was shared with the, our WOCPAC co-chairs to utilize and consider to provide to parents, and it's something that we will look at to possibly provide to district staff as a resource. And that actually, the, the first page includes a flow chart of the pre-referral, referral, and it gives like a nice little visual overview in addition to, um, you know, a very articulate and easy-to-understand document.
Okay, good. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Mr. Swartzbaum, anything?
First, I wanna thank you and your team for your continuous efforts. And it was a very comprehensive report. Um, I think you hit a lot of the key points, which is, one is to continuously, um, monitor and evaluate a program and improve it. Compliance, as we know from the, uh, special ed audit, is a, uh, major area, just for, from a legal perspective. Uh, the communications, I think it's great that you're working on the manual, I think it's important, the cheat sheet, as well as working with the community and the professional development. Um, I think that's very comprehensive. In regard to the electronic filing systems, what do the other, uh, districts that you, um, visited, what type of system do they use?
To be honest, I'm not... To be honest, I'm not certain, in terms of the teachers that went to the other visits, they were looking more so at their instructional programs, assessments and stuff, but I can certainly, you know, get information from other districts and report back on that.
Okay, just because to use, just to get...
That's a good point.
You know, just use someone else's system, which will give you some good indications of how it works. The other question I had was, overall, what do you anticipate the major changes will be based upon your visits and evaluations of the current program?
I think it'll help us to identify what instructional programs are being utilized in other districts, if they're using specific programs, if they are doing, you know, more teacher-made types of programs, what types of assessments are being utilized for students with more significant cognitive disabilities, so we can better address our population.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Robertson, anything?
Just a couple of things, to kind of dovetail on the electronic filing. Were, from a budgetary standpoint, were you seeing a greater impact in terms of looking at cloud services, or was it internal servers? Was, is it a software? Is it the impact of, what type of software are you utilizing from a filing standpoint for file sharing and that sort of thing? Where was the impact coming from?
I think with, right now, we have the paper filing system. I hope I'm answering your question correctly. Within IEP Direct, we have the ability to upload, and there is a document repository. The one piece that I think is lacking in IEP Direct is that we can't organize the files. They just get uploaded. So we really need a system that we can identify evaluations, IEPs, independent assessments, so there, it's easy to locate the different documents that we're utilizing. You know, we have, case managers will upload the documents into the document repository, but it's more, you know, transportation application, so it's things that we can view quickly, whereas, you know, other systems, they can organize what the file is, and what would go into each file.
Can IEP Direct interface with other types of filing software? Or do we have to have, bring in somebody to develop a customizable, some customizable software to address the need?
I would have to follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. First, you know, this is just the most comprehensive, in-depth work and approach that I think we've ever taken, and kudos to you and your team.
Thank you.
Tremendous amount of work, and the, the efforts in, in PD for staff, PD for parents, and the efforts to really revamp the manual, excellent.
Thank you.
Couple of things. When you talked about, you were talking about the world language and meeting graduation requirements, what have been the factors that have been the biggest barriers in terms of meeting graduation requirements? Has it been really reading capabilities? Is it, what is, what have you seen?
So within the meeting, the graduation requirements, the, this curriculum would focus specifically on, you know, for our students with autism and intellectual disabilities that might struggle in a larger group.
Right.
Historically, and it's not just West Orange, but other districts, we're not, you know, I think it was like, we could waive the graduation requirement, but now, you know, the state is saying that it cannot be waived, so we have to look at options to really address the needs of the students. And that's something that is really statewide, not just specific to West Orange. And that's been conversations that have occurred in the directors' roundtable meetings as well.
Wow. And what type of options are being provided, since this is a brand new, I mean, we normally had a committee that would look at the student's total work, student's progress, and assess whether or not that, you know, certain requirements could be waived. What, what type of leeway are you allowed? Are you allowed to look at a student's total body of work? Is it the amount of progress students made? What, is there any leeway given at all, or are there more strict requirements now?
I don't know that there's really leeway. I think we have to provide a course, so we want to make it applicable that, where it's gonna be beneficial to the students, rather than just give, you know, the content and say, okay, we're just giving it to give it, but kind of make it a little bit more applicable. So some districts, I believe, do like a world cultures class, where they have exposure to the different cultures. So we're looking at, you know, something, I guess, along those lines to target the needs of the students and allow them to benefit from that exposure.
Okay. In terms, as, as we're progressing, I mean, a lot of this came out of the tremendous amount of feedback that we got from parents, we got from staff, et cetera. Is there, are there any surveys? I know that you've done a lot of feedback groups. Are there ongoing surveys or feedback groups to kind of judge how you're doing, and as you're, as you're improving, how everything operates?
We have not. I did do a survey with the child study team at the conclusion of last year, just in terms of what they felt went well within the department. I think we can certainly expand that out, you know, with parents, teachers, et cetera. So I did start with the child study team at the end of last year, and I do have that information.
Okay. I also noted that you mentioned about anxiety-related IEPs. Are we identifying anxiety conditions earlier? Are we seeing a great increase in IEPs related to anxiety? Because that's a very hot topic in education and mental health in general.
I would say that it is very relevant right now. I think we are seeing it a lot at younger ages now, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, so it's definitely an area of focus that we have to have. We did, because we put such, we placed such a major emphasis on the training with the present levels of academic achievement and functional performance, we now have to shift into other areas, so looking at the special ed process, and then certainly, you know, social-emotional learning with students. We really have to target everybody, so general ed teachers, special ed teachers, related arts teachers, because everybody's working with students across all settings.
Okay. Last question.
Sure.
One of the things, the elements that's always of enormous budgetary impact are out-of-district placements and often unbudgeted ones. Has there been any discussion as to how long-term, if not short-term, but long-term, we may be able to address that challenge in order to be able to provide the best possible services to our kids, while at the same time being able to control cost?
Right. I think it's a case-by-case basis. We will try various options within district. We'll try to think outside the box to provide different support options to students. Students that typically go out, we have tried multiple approaches, and we have found it challenging to meet their needs within the district.
All right. Thank you so much. I mean, really tremendous, tremendous work.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, just a quick comment, Director, to, you know, kudos to you and your staff, a very thorough and comprehensive report and update, so thank you.
Thank you.
With regard to the world language, we have spoken to the State Department. We cannot waive world language requirements for special education students. We can look at modifying the courses. We cannot replace it with reading. We've been instructed, no. But we can look at different options for modification and a world cultures course, as Kristin has suggested. With reference to additional behavior specialists, we will see that in the budget, it is necessary. And then if you could just give us a brief statement on the special education policy,
So the special ed policy was presented to the Board of Education for First Reading this evening. The policy was previously revised in June 2017. I was not part of that process, but I do understand that there was input from the community with regards to the policy. So the policy was revisited at the start of this school year. I had the opportunity to look very in-depth at it. The policy was also shared with our district's special education attorney for feedback. Based on the review at that point in time, revisions were made to the policy. In November, we held three parent feedback sessions, so we invited parent liaisons from the West Orange Special Ed Parent Advisory Council to come in. They came in on the seventh, November 7th, November 13th, and November 19th. They took a look at the policy. We provided them with a rubric where they can provide us with feedback. Once the three sessions were concluded, we compiled the feedback, reviewed everything, and determined, you know, what feedback could we consider for the policy, or what might be more procedural in nature. So not going in the policy, but things that we're doing as a department that maybe we need to consider written procedures for. So the policy was updated to include, you know, feedback that we felt was appropriate to be included from the parents, and it was presented to the Board Policy Review Committee.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
That concludes the superintendent reports, except for the HIB. I'm passing that down. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
No, thank you.
None, okay. Next item on the agenda then, is questions from the public on agenda items. These are just questions or comments on anything that is on the agenda. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please adhere to the three-minute time limit that Mr. Calavano will keep. These are just on agenda items only.
Good evening, Nicole Harper, 88 Goydus Avenue. Just coming forward tonight with a question about the follow-up with the bus situation. My daughter was on bus number 140, was allowed to get off and walk home, just to follow-up with the consequences given to the bus drivers. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue. That was a lot of material, so I'm a little discombobulated here. My first question is actually for the student representatives. I wasn't quite sure how to access, I think you said that your site is only accessible to students, so like, how would a middle school student be able to get to your site? My second...
You girls can answer for, matter of process, answer at the end. We'll go through all your questions.
Okay. I also had a couple of follow-up questions about the, the bus drivers and the winter transportation situation. I know there were a number of parents at the last meeting who spoke, there were many, many great stories about bus drivers, and then there were some stories where it looks like bus drivers did not follow policy. And in one case, there was a bus driver who seems to have continued going to two more different schools after the shelter-in-place order was given. So I'm wondering what kind of follow-up has happened with bus drivers, and actually, how was the shelter-in-place order given out to everyone so they knew at that point that that was what they were supposed to do? Do they even have training so that, I mean, that's, I've never heard of that before. That might be the first time that ever happened. Was there a procedure in place so that they knew what to do? Next, on the Legionella, I have to say, it bothers me that it's always prefaced, when we talk about this, with, no one has gotten sick, this is not a danger, no one should be worrying about this, because this is a, this is a matter of, of public safety, and, you know, the most important job is to keep the kids safe. Ms. Mendez said that over and over at the last board meeting. And there is actually something called pineac fever that is less severe than Legionnaires' disease, but also causes illness and can affect people with a normal immune system. Similarly, with the CO2 situation, a parent asked about that at the last board meeting, which was three weeks ago, and at that time, it seemed that nothing had been done. So what it looks like is that from the time the students discovered that, and the district was able to confirm it last spring, nothing had been done until a parent asked about it last, at the last meeting. And I realize that there's a lot of, we have old buildings, there's a lot of infrastructure work that needs to be done. But last August, you voted to give back $3 million to taxpayers, when we have ventilators in five classrooms where we have to keep the windows open and the doors open, so that the CO2 levels aren't too high. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Rachel Gordon, 8 Meeker Street. I just wanted to, I'm very tired, sorry. In thinking about the emergency planning and the transportation update, and the fact that we may be getting a grant, which is great, but the amount of money we have spent on the Legionella, which obviously we have to do because it's public safety and the CO2, in, Ms. Mordecai, Mordecai mentioned, there, people are thinking about budgets now, so are we planning to budget in, you know, all of these things? Because it seems like we may be, you know, we hadn't thought about that, so we should be thinking in terms of budgeting so that we have public safety, so that we have, if we, hopefully, will never have what happened in November happen again, but that we have all of these things in place, and that we are, you know, that we have the money in place so that we are, you know, really giving our kids the utmost safety and health. That's it for right now.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Terry Trigg Scales, 85 Clarkin Drive. I just wondered what the ongoing efforts are by the district to diversify our staff. I see that we've hired a number of new staff members, and I just wonder what the ongoing effort is. I know that we had the diversity fair, but I'm wondering what kind of recruitment techniques we are employing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good night, Kiva Schultz, 25 Aspen Road. I just wanted to clarify on miscellaneous D as far as the fencing. Does that also include Edison Middle School? Because this is middle school, but it's usually Liberty and Roosevelt. Does it also include Edison for the boys and girls fencing team? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone further? Seeing that one, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Ms. Mendez, if you want to start with some of the questions, please.
Sure. With regard to bus drivers during the November 15th and any subsequent event, we are meeting with, interviewing, and investigating all items that have been brought to our attention. We cannot discuss consequences, as those are personnel matters, but we are validating and or confirming anything that has been submitted to us in that nature. With regard to training for bus drivers, that is a part of our emergency planning. We need to provide training for bus drivers and staff for sheltering in place. We are including that. We have talked with the Office of Emergency Management. They will be providing that training to bus drivers. With regard to, how did we call the shelter in place? The local police department let us know when we needed to call the shelter in place for bus drivers. We then communicated through our transportation department to all of the bus drivers via the radio, to let them know that they were sheltering in place instantly, and that took place immediately. With the bus that we were reported, continue to go through the route, again, personnel matter, and we cannot discuss that, but we are looking into all of the reports. With regard to costs and budget and CO2, Rachel, and all of the things that we are going to need to include in our budget this year, exorbitant, large, high costs. We're definitely beginning to talk about that. John, do you want to speak to that?
Well, just the one, the one item that I mentioned at the last board meeting. I'm still working with the financial advisor and our bond council, see if it's possible to at least go on a five-year lease to start to replace the unit ventilators in the high school. We're working through some of the issues right now. Hopefully, that'll be one option, so instead of hitting the budget for the entire amount in one year, we could spread it over in the next five years. When we talk about, you know, we were, we weren't doing anything with the testing, everything was just brought to our attention. The testing was scheduled for months ago for the elementary schools. The only time you want to test is when the boilers are on. So we had this schedule set up that the first week in December would be probably an ideal time to do the testing. So we were just waiting for that. And also, the parts, since the unit vents are so old, it's taken a contractor longer, much longer time trying to get these parts. They should have arrived today, I'm hoping that that'll resolve at least five of the major issues that we have in the high school.
Thank you. With regard to Legionella and a matter of public safety, absolutely, and we're taking it very seriously. We've done everything we could to date with short-term remediation efforts. We're now... remediation efforts. We're now having to shift over into long-term remediation efforts. That will be located in a water management plan. That will take time to develop. We are working, however, closely with our health department, with the different consultants. We have a plumbing consultant coming in to walk through all of our flow across our buildings. We have an engineer coming in to work with us to really identify where Legionella could potentially be harbored, et cetera. So, we've exhausted our short-term goals. We are now moving into long-term planning, and it is very serious. And we're taking it very seriously. Okay? Ms. Trigg Scales, with regard to diversifying our staff, what ongoing efforts are we employing? I will begin to research that and look into what's happening in the district to date. And then, we will be able to, I'm assuming, be able to establish a committee and really set some concrete goals. I know the Board has mentioned on several occasions, setting goals for diversity and affirmative action and needing to prioritize that. I'm aware and needing to begin to work with our team to set those efforts in motion.
Ms. Mendez, if I may. There is a diversity committee in place. Mr. Hush is the chair. So, I don't know the last time they met, but I used to be the board liaison to that committee when Principal Moore was in charge of it. And I see Mrs. Pennell nodding her head because she was one of the parent representatives on the diversity committee. So, um...
I'll follow up.
Yeah. I don't know if he's had any meetings, but I certainly haven't been invited.
I'll follow up.
But I know he's, with the previous HR director, I remember him going to Howard University in DC and some other colleges. And when Mr. Moore was in charge of it, I remember him going to Clark Atlanta and Emory and some other colleges in Georgia. So, I don't know what his efforts are to date. So, please follow up. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
To Ms. Mordecai's point, we, I know that there was outreach. There were some efforts with HBCUs, historical black colleges, as well as Hispanic service institutions. However, going back to what you were mentioning earlier in terms of establishing goals, technically by law, even until it's outlawed, we're supposed to, because we receive federal funds, we're actually supposed to have an affirmative action plan. We've always had affirmative action, quote, "point person," but we haven't had a real plan that established, that looked grade by grade as to what our diversity looks like, and then established grade by grade or by elementary school, middle school, et cetera, what our diversity goals are. And diversity goals, you know, this could look at basically every aspect of diversity. But we are supposed to have an affirmative action planned. And that's, I'm not sure who's going to own that, but whether it's going to come out of HR.
I'm going to locate it. I'll review it and then see what modifications and or more aggressive goals need to be put in place.
Yeah, because it's never actually been presented to the Board.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure. And lastly, with regard to fencing, fencing, yay, it's starting. We have identified a location. It is on the agenda. It does not include Edison currently. Right now, it's grades seven through high school. We're able to provide the fencing training to 25 high school students, 25 middle school students. It will be at Lilliv Academy. And the trainer there is an expert trainer, will train students for Olympics. Thirty-six percent of the students get scholarships to colleges. So, it is very, a very nice facility. We went to visit it, a very professional facility. He is going to aid us with some of the costs for the equipment for the students. That can be costly. So, in year one, he will aid us in providing some of those, the equipment, the uniforms, the swords, and all of those materials to the students. And then, we can see those who take great interest in the fencing, then we can submit to the Board for professional equipment in future years.
Sounds like a good plan. On the last thing is about the middle school access for the students.
There are a couple of ways to access the website. There's a student bulletin board for the high school, and on that is a link to our website. And the student bulletin board can be found under student links on the website. Is there anything in specific?
For any student that has an Instagram profile, if you want to access the West Orange High School Student Council website, oh, not website, my bad, my page, the page, there is a link directly in the bio, in the bio for the website.
We can also request to have flyers put up in the lower and middle schools so that, because the flyers have a QR code. So, if they're put up in elementary and middle schools, then students will have easy access to them. And then, they can open the link and/or copy it down and have it sent to the parents. And then, lastly, if we can get a letter sent home to the parents, the letter can contain the link to the website.
Okay. That sounds like a good plan. If we can, I guess, put it on the middle school websites as well, just whether they have a link right over.
Yeah. Well, I think there actually, there is a shortcut for it. They created the shortcut link. It's wobo.org/liaison. Might be liaisons, but you have to spell liaison right. There's an extra I or A where you don't expect it. I still can't get that right. There is a limitation on it, though, because it's through Google Classroom. You can only access it if you're coming from a logged-in West Orange Schools account. So, to that extent, for parents to see it, they're going to have to look on, on their kid's Chromebooks or whatnot.
Okay.
But middle schoolers would have those accounts and would be able to access that in elementary, for that matter as well, I think.
Yeah. And that's the reason why that's, that's the way that is, is just to keep it within our school district. And so, any responses has to come from the student, not from an outside.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, I'm going to turn over to our policy chairperson, Ms. Mordecai, for the board policies.
Sure. And Mr. Robertson as well. Tonight, we are moving on first reading, special education policy, 6171.4. Recruitment, hiring, and selection, 4111 and 4211. Domestic violence, 4111. Actually, there's an error there. 4211.2. Administering medication, 5141.221. Medical marijuana, 5141.22. The special education policy, Ms. Gogarty just went over the overview, so I won't go over that. Recruitment, selection, and hiring, the revision there is as it relates to employment history for background for child abuse and sexual misconduct. The revision for domestic violence is also for employees. But during our policy meeting with Acting Superintendent Mendez, Mr. Robertson, and I did share that for domestic violence, we wanted to talk about having a similar policy for domestic violence for students, for teenagers. As teenage dating and situations like that go on, we probably need to look at domestic violence policy for students. So, we'll be discussing that in the new year. And the last policy, no. Administrative medication policy is just an update as well. That update applies to the opioid crisis that we have nationally, locally. And the last policy, medical marijuana, this is as it relates to cancer patients. So, that's just a brief overview. Tonight's the first reading. The second reading will be next week. But however, if you want to go out of order and take some questions tonight, we could, or we could, because next week, we're, we're focused next week on awards. So, if anyone has questions on the policies, if they want to take a look at them, there's, there's a form on Wobo for parents to go in on the first reading of the policy and fill out that form if you have any particular questions to reach out to us. Mr. Robertson, you want to add?
Just a couple of comments. On the recruitment and selection, it also went into if applicants had a license, professional license, or certification suspended or revoked due to allegations of child abuse or sexual misconduct. That's also now covered under it. And for the domestic violence, let me see, I'm not going to go into that, into great depth on that. But these are all significantly expanded, or not only new, but expanded in terms of the areas that they, they now overlap with. Because even the medication one overlaps, overlapping with the, the medical marijuana provision, the administration of medication. But, yeah, that's about seven points. I'm not going to go into that detail. But, so if we just take, take any questions at this point from, from the Board?
The Board has any questions?
I have none. I'm good.
Okay.
Like to make a motion to move all, all the policies on first reading?
Do we have a motion to move the policies?
I'll move.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper? Yes. Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
Okay. Next, on the agenda, Section A Personnel. I need a motion to move Section A Personnel with the addendum regarding employee number 4290. Do I have a motion to move Section A?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper? Yes. Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes, with the exception of employee 4290.
Is that a no?
As a no, yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes, with the exception of employee number 4290.
I need a motion for next, Section B.
Just one quick, we forgot to congratulate Marcia Gravolsky on 34, almost 35 years. She now goes into retirement. May she enjoy her retirement. We thank you for your tremendous service. That's in special education at the high school.
Thank you for that. Standing there, congratulations. Next section is B, Curriculum and Instruction. I need a motion to move that section.
I'll move.
I need a second. I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion from the Board?
Yes. Couple of comments and questions. First of all, I'm glad that we are supporting the, the research, the project that's being done in restorative justice. Does it include any aspects of looking at mindfulness as part of the interventions? That's been an alternative that's been utilized.
If we consider specific aspects of what would benefit the Board in terms of the professional development, we can look at mindfulness. In terms of informing the dissertation, it is not ours to inform. And so, then, Ms. Peart would define the parameters of her own dissertation.
Okay. Regarding summer enrichment, our summer enrichment program is fantastic. Every year, we have questions about, will they ever have online registration and the addition of aftercare? Because the program, even the extended version of the program ends about 3:30 or 4 o'clock. And for a lot of parents, it's still been an inconvenience if they're not off till 5 or 6.
Okay.
And last, I'm glad that we are, you know, doing this new PD on ELA curriculum and look forward to getting an updated presentation on the curriculum in the spring, because there are a number of elements over the years that have kept coming back as questions that have never been adequately answered in terms of how we instruct in grammar, the issues with our students not reading enough books, reading too many articles. We were supposed to be teaching Latin and Greek roots, and that, there's a little follow-through on that to help kids be able to decipher words on first contact. So, look forward to the follow-up on that.
Sure. And just to speak briefly on that, in the area of English Language Arts, we do have a committee established of approximately 42 teachers who are evaluating the ELA program, K-12. Concurrently, we have a team of curriculum writers that are developing new curriculum in alignment to the units of study and our readers workshop and the findings of the committee. So, they're going to be working together. The teachers in our listening sessions have stated clearly that this is a district priority, that they need resources for ELA. And therefore, the third prong to that work is that we're bringing all district teachers by grade level so that they can have direct input into the committee. Therefore, it's not just the committee of 42. It will be the committee of the whole. It will be the entire elementary program that's providing direct input into the process. And so, those three working in tandem, we will have a comprehensive report in the, in spring, May, to the Board about ELA, what the findings were, what the areas are that really need to be embedded into the ELA program, what the resources are, and then we will be informing our budget with the same.
There's one element, though, that unless I misheard, that I think is missing. Parent feedback. One of the things that's helped us a lot in totally changing the, the evolution or finally evolving our gifted and talented program was parent feedback. Our, in special education, parent feedback. So many of the areas where we've significantly improved things, even on the math committee, there were parents, and there are parents now. So, for ELA, I think it deserves also that parent feedback. We have parents who are educators. We have parents who are educated. And I hear from a lot of parents, feedback on these areas. My kids in, in high school, and still not a very good grasp of grammar because of how it's been taught, or gee, it's wonderful that, you know, my daughter's reading this article or that article again, but what happened to, you know, Steinbeck and, and, and stories by, you know, some of the great authors? So, you know, it'd be great to get that parent feedback.
We agree that parent feedback is critical. Parents are being woven into the process in February. Right now, September to January, it was primarily teachers working through technical content, and then parents onboard in February to begin to look at recommendations, materials, provide input, examine those resources, and see how they're useful at home, et cetera. So, yes, they are included as a part of the process, and they're onboarding in February.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Mordecai?
Yes. Ms. Mendez, on, on the same item, English Language Arts, you mentioned September till now. So, this has started in September?
Yes, it did.
Okay. I would actually like to see an update of the process from September through now. In light of the fact you just mentioned, there are 42 teachers, the curriculum council is involved.
Yeah.
But this seems like an extensive process for 19 days of professional development. If you could present this to the Board first, what you've done so far, and just want to make sure that there, there's money in the budget for us to cover this as well.
So, then, this 19 days is definitely critical to the process. It's in response to our efforts as a committee and the listening sessions. It is Title I, II, and IV funded, so there's no LEA cost here. I would certainly be prepared to bring a presentation to the Board. I ask, though, that you allow us to move forward with the professional development as it includes all of our ELA teachers that are elementary to begin professional development.
What is the name of the program? Because that's not here.
The program for...
The English Language Arts Program.
Oh, it's, it's professional development around the Reader's Writers Workshop, the resources, materials, and the structures. It's still the same thing, yes. But the teachers have identified various areas that are priorities. One, resources and materials. Two, professional development around the workshop model. And three, the ability to be directly involved with the committee work.
All right. And the resources and materials, and in terms of how they're delivering the curriculum and the workshop model, I know that one area that continuously came up, and I'm sure it's got to be part of it, is how to appropriately deliver against differentiation, both through the book club aspect of it, as well as through some other elements that were in the program.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper? Yes. Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Do I have a motion to move Section C, Finance?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion from the Board?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, go ahead, right ahead.
Yes. Item number eight, in regard to the ZELI Architecture Group. I would... I would recommend that we, as a board, really look into whether the architectural group has really, is meeting our needs and really assess whether we should continue with them in light of the fact that the this bubble project really has taken nine months longer than what was anticipated. And and I really, in my own opinion, I don't really think that they're very responsive to the board. They're not telling, they didn't give us a heads up, and their continuous answers are, oh, you didn't ask us to do that. That's why we are, we, as a board, are retaining an architectural firm to tell us what to do in regard to planning, building, and so on and so forth. So, I think we we should really look into that, whether we want to retain them.
I concur with you, Mr. Schwartzbaum, on that. I'm sure all the board does after that.
Yes.
Speaking with them, I I do think we should move this, though, and then the reorganization meeting, the architect will be on that as well, Mr. Calavano?
At this point, yes.
Okay. So, I think the new board will have a decision to make.
I concur.
So, but I but we all share your sentiment about the performance on the bubble, and certainly no one's more disappointed in it than I am, that it's not, here we are, December, and there's not even a stake in the ground, and, you know, it doesn't look any anything anytime soon, so.
Yeah, let's move it now and fire them later.
Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Calavano, let's vote, please.
No, I have questions.
You have a question?
Yes.
Ms. Mordecai, please.
Yes. Under Finance Number Three, the agreement with Moncler State, the Center for Autism, we've been, we've had this agreement several years, and this amount is significantly lower. Is this a partial for something specific? Because I know it's typically over thirty thousand. So, is this for something specific and not not our usual agreement, which we've already approved earlier this year?
I will follow up, but I believe it's for, we're not, for student and men services that are needed in the past. The consultant is concerned with this.
Director, you're going to have to come when, because she can't pick you up from there. We want to make sure the people can hear you at home.
I'll follow up definitively on the cost, but I believe that the consultant is providing less services than she has in the past.
I wonder why. When our spec population continues to grow.
She primarily provides services at the preschool level.
Okay.
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 Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
I have one.
Ms. Mordecai, anything further?
Yes, I would like to thank the World Organization for Positive Action for donating backpacks to Hazel, Washington, and Gregory Schools in August, and and thank my colleague, Mr. Alper, for helping me distribute the backpacks. Number eleven and twelve, Mr. Calavano, can you please explain the carryover funds for the public?
So, this is money that's unspent from the current year that we're able to roll into the following school year.
Okay.
So, we don't lose the funds. We're able to reallocate those funds.
And I have a few abstentions from the bill list.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get that, we need to vote here. Okay, Mr. Robertson, anything?
Very quickly, as we talked, I'm sorry, as we talked earlier during the special education audit report presentation, just calling our attention to tonight, there's nearly an item number one, nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in services that we need to deliver for, in in conjunction with out-of-district programs. That was, that's not money that was budgeted. And for the record, I voted against the giving all the three million dollars back. But we we were going to have some serious budget challenges in conjunction with all the new unforeseen costs as well as other costs in the past that we just never, that we never funded, like the six hundred thousand dollar Washington retaining wall that's been crumbling for over a year. So, it's it's going to be a very interesting budget season.
Okay. Mr. Calavano, let's vote on Section C, Finance.
Mr. Alper?
Yes, abstaining on the bill list, item B-one, vendor eleven nine eighty-four, which is me.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes, abstaining on certain names for Aiden Liu, Linda Ieny, Lisa Alston, Nicole Bell, Monica Evans, Kim Lemon, Imani Randolph, Karen Skiers, Claudia Woodard, and that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes, but not voting on vendor number one one four nine six.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes, except for vendor one 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 nine one.
Next on the agenda is Section D miscellaneous, which is the Boys and Girls Fencing Team. Do I have a motion to move?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, if that wasn't part of the other section, let's vote on that again just for if I mentioned it. Okay, so.
Ready?
Do we need to vote on that?
Item G miscellaneous.
The number one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we're up for vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes, and finally, thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
Next agenda item is Section E, Reports. Do I have a motion to move Section E Reports?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is reports from board members. Mr. Alper, anything?
Um, yeah, just briefly. Ms. Demendez has been hosting some Q and A sessions with parents in conjunction with some middle school PTAs. I've managed to go to two of those, and I found them really super useful. They've been kind of small group discussions. There's been a lot of good questions and responses, and, you know, to the extent that there's going to be more of those, I would encourage folks to make it out to those. They're really good.
Okay. Ms. Mordecai, anything?
Just very briefly, I'll do a more extensive report at another time. But last night, I had the pleasure of attending the New Jersey School Board Association Equity Council meeting in Trenton, and I learned quite a lot. One one thing I did learn when I came back to our district is we don't have an equity policy, we have an equity plan, but we don't have an equity policy. So, coming up in the new year, I am looking forward to presenting an equity policy to the board. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yeah, first, I just wanted to really compliment Ms. Menendez for really doing an outstanding role as the acting superintendent. So, I'd just like, thank you. I would like to also point out, you know, there are many, many comments in regard to capital improvements and the expenses, and I know I may be a broken record, but I had continuously pointed out on the ESIP program where we spent eleven million dollars on really frivolous projects that had no payback. And the comment I made, this is over three and a half years ago, that in all buildings, we're going to have issues, and here we are, and we have a lot of issues. And now, we 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 have to really look at how we are going to fund it, whether it be through bonding or anything else. I will point out one thing, that in this year's budget, that we do have nine million dollars that at least, I know it's not going to all be available, but we are somewhat available, so I think we should really look into utilizing some of the availability within the expenses that we're under, that to start spending it and use it, utilizing it for the various, whether it be on CO2 and the retaining wall and other items. And it will be a budgetary issue. And I will sit, make the comment that the give back to the taxpayers is, was the right decision. The wrong decision was the eleven million dollars on the ESIP because we were supposed to save seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and never happened, won't happen, and we primarily had programs, projects of the eleven that was most probably a million and a half dollars that should have been spent, so, which means that we would have had nine and a half million dollars to spend. So, yes, it's water under the bridge, and you can undo it, but that's why good decision-making is important.
Schwartzbaum? Mr. Robertson, anything?
I concur in the in twenty twenty hindsight on ESIP. I'd like to ask, Mr. Calavano, since under the law, we were supposed to have, it was supposed to pay for itself, it's supposed to be guaranteed, what is, what can we do or what has been done in really holding Honeywell accountable?
So, I believe the month, the year ended, the the end of November, so they have to wait for the bills to come in. They'll analyze that, and then they're scheduled to be out here in January to do some type of field work, and then they'll have a report to the board.
I believe the the only, the only thing that the board could do is, there was a fifty thousand dollar a year bonus that we can withhold. For the most part, we spent the money, so there were no guarantees. The guarantee, the guarant, there were no guarantees in the ESIP program. It was just, it was a projection based upon where the market was going to be in natural gas and in oil. They 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 made their underlying assumptions that oil would be at a hundred and ten dollars a barrel, where everybody in the financial markets indicated it would be in the forty to fifty dollars. Okay, so, it's a bad, it wasn't a, an incorrect decision. It was just using a decision based upon projections that could have been challenged, so they made wrong. It's a, it's a poor business decision.
Agreed.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, I have no comments. I'll I'll bank my time for next week. Okay, so, okay. Next on the agenda is our next board meeting, which will be held seven P M. in the auditorium right here at West Orange High School, December seventeenth. It is our parade of honors. I think that's what we're calling it, so that's a, we're going to salute our staff, our students, and our our community. Good way to end the year, I think. So, next on the agenda is petitions and hearings from the citizens on any subject matter. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please adhere to the three-minute time limit. Mr. Calavano will work the clock, please.
Hi, Suzanne Pennell, twenty-seven Fairview Avenue. The annual For Our Troops collection has come to a most successful end. Because of the generosity of so many West Orange residents, we were actually able to send one hundred and sixty-five boxes to twenty servicemen and women, many of them local, including from West Orange. And thanks to Cynthia Cummings for helping coordinate the cards and letters, which were designed and by our teachers and our students of our schools, all of the schools. They were such beautiful creations and very heartfelt messages in many of them. Plus, there were clubs and classes at Roosevelt and the high school that had specific collections to help us as well, and we are so appreciative for that. My co-chair Kathy and I are very, very grateful to everyone who contributed, including many residents and children who helped us on packing day. I think the best way to express how much this effort means to those serving away from home over the holiday season is, in their own words, "Some of the young West Orange men from whom we've already heard since shipping out boxes." Dear Mrs. Pigott and Mrs. Pennell, I just received several of your holiday boxes, and right now, I'm overwhelmed by the generosity of our community. You have sent me more than enough goods to last my entire deployment. Its deployment is actually beginning on December twenty-sixth. Because of this, I can share these gifts with our soldiers as well. So, on behalf of Bravo Company, I thank you again. Best of all, were the holiday cards. I remember making them myself fifteen years ago at Pleasant Dale, and it warms my heart to know it still continues today. Sincerely, Stephen Marancy. Hello, Mrs. Pennell. My name is Lance Corporal Chase Gardulo from Camp Pendleton, California. I received some care packages today from you and West Orange, and we all just wanted to say thank you. We're extremely grateful we have a community that supports our troops, and we appreciate everything you've done for us. We appreciate especially the letters from the local schools and all the goodies that came along, too. Thank you again for everything. Happy holidays from the Aviation Ordnancemen of Camp Pendleton. And this one was a little more personal. Dear Ma, jeez, that's sure a lot of boxes. At this rate, we'll overload the Chung-Hoon's mail capacity. I'm kidding, of course, but thank you so much for doing this. I'm sure it will be the best surprise for everyone on the ship. I'm guessing it's going to be about a month or so before we get the packages, but believe me, Jack, Tom, and I will share everything in the boxes with as many on the ship as we can, except for the card you included in one of my boxes from West Orange students. I'd like to keep them to myself because I love my town so much, and I miss it very much as well. Love you, Dylan. So, thank you. Thank you for always supporting this endeavor with the cards and the letters. The students are amazing, the teachers. Please, what I can't say to them, please say for me. And as always, may they all come home safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Antoine Khan. I'm at one forty-five Franklin Avenue, and I'd like to request that a communication be sent to the parents concerning the bubble, just to provide some transparency in terms of what's going on. Right now, there's a perception that nothing's been, nothing's happening with the bubble right now. Even the athletic groups, they're not aware that anything is going on as well. I was in a meeting recently to talk with the the track team, and even the athletic folks, they didn't, they didn't know anything was going on with the bubble. So, some transparency would be helpful.
Thank you.
Jennifer Beazer, eighty-two Lawrence Avenue. Two quick clarifications. Ms. Demendez, in the discussion of the Legionella, did you say at one point that it's, in some instances, coming from outside the school, meaning that it's in the water that's coming into the school? It's not something that's happening in the buildings? And in terms of the CO2, I think we mentioned that the high school was tested and middle schools, or elementary school, I'm sorry, are the middle schools also being tested? And I also wanted to say, I was able to attend the meeting with Ms. Demendez at Roosevelt last week, and Mr. Alper was there, Mr. Hush, and just a few parents, and it really was a great conversation and very productive, a lot of give and take. I think it was a really constructive thing to do, and I would urge the board, this has come up a number of times, and I know there's issues about what constitutes a legal meeting, but there has to be some way for board members to be able to reach out and have that kind of interchange with the public, the way Ms. Demendez did. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, Kiva Schultz, twenty-five Aspen Road. So, I just wanted to petition the board to include sixth graders as well for the fencing program in order to create a pipeline. If a sixth grader starts in, then they'll have at least three years before they start in ninth grade, which I think is going to improve the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
Next.
Hello, I'm Tracy Brosnan at fourteen H. Terrace. I have a student athlete at the high school, and I'm also inquiring about the status of the bubble. I know it's a challenge for these kids to get the workouts that they need to get in without the proper equipment, and if we want West Orange to be competitive, that's going to be important. So, if I could just get a status on where we are. Thank you.
Seeing no one further, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Ms. Demendez?
To Ms. Pennell, thank you for sharing about what is happening with our troops and how our students and staff are reaching out to them, including your son. It's always heartwarming to hear you speak about all of the efforts, and of course, we expect and hope and pray that they come home safe. To Mr. Khan and Ms. Brosnan, we will work on the status of the bubble and get that out to the community and our athletic departments, et cetera, as soon as possible.
to the community and our athletic departments, et cetera, as soon as possible. Ms. Beazer, is Legionella coming from the outside? When we speak with our consultants, they give us possibilities, they don't speak in absolute, so they say water is coming in from the outside, it has to carry some level of Legionella. Even if it's a small level, when you combine that with old pipes, older buildings, dead ends, then that magnifies or it harbors. And so then, that's the explanation we've received so far. However, one of our long-term planning efforts is also going to be to analyze that, to test that specifically, and to see if there are elevated levels of Legionella coming in from the outside. John, do you want to speak about CO2 in the middle schools?
In the middle schools, Liberty being our newest school, should not have an issue with Liberty. The other two, I believe we did have work done years and years ago to replace those unit ventilators, but our goal now was to get the elementaries knowing that they're the older schools, to get them tested, but we will test the other three middle schools.
And Ms. Schutz, with regard to a pipeline, where are you? So, there you are. With regard to the pipeline in the sixth grade, absolutely, we can take that into consideration. Specifically, we can look at how many seventh and eighth graders enroll. If we don't have the max, then we can look at sixth grade now. If we do have the max, then we can consider that for next year.
Okay, thank you. Any last comments from the board?
Just one.
Ladies first. Ms. Mordecai?
Sure, thank you. Just want to say a quick thank you to Mrs. Pennell. How many years have you been doing this? Five, ten? Thank you so much for all your efforts every year to making sure that there's donations and cards and everything's being sent to our servicemen and women, and yes, may they all come home safe. Thank you to your son for serving as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mordecai. Mr. Robertson?
Ms. Pennell, thank you for all you do, and I'm going to share with you later offline, Dylan has helped to actually inspire an Eagle project that's coming up, that you'll love to hear about. And I do want to say, Ms. Beazer asked about opportunities for board members to have those types of exchanges. Actually, unfortunately, I missed Liberty the other night. I was at, well, not unfortunately, I was at Jared's Soccer Awards, and that was, that was a beautiful evening. But I can say that, I know in, in being on the, when I was on the Mount Pleasant PTA a couple of years ago, on Liberty PTA and on the high school PTA, Ms. Di Giacomo, Mr. Klempt, and Mr. Moore have all been very generous and supportive in allowing, when people had questions, allowing me to speak for myself, not, not for the whole board, but to give my answers and to be able to respond to them, and I've found that invaluable. I learned so much from the parents on a number of areas. I'll give an example, and one of the high school ones is when I learned that there were parents who didn't feel that they had gotten information about key programs, like the healthcare program in conjunction with Rutgers and other programs at the high school. So that then opened up a new conversation as to how to better get information to parents and not just rely on them necessarily going through the students. But I've found that time invaluable. Parents teach me all the time, and, and you're right, that's, that's a great opportunity and encourage all board members, whether you're on a PTA, and I know Mr. Alper is Mr. PTA over the years, I think he's been on more boards than anybody. But, but I do encourage my colleagues to definitely to get out and to, you know, work, of course, talk to Ms. Mendez if you're not already on the PTA, to then get to the principal to see if you can attend a meeting and, or just talk to the PTA president if they want to invite for a session with parents and stuff. But it's a great opportunity, you're absolutely right.
Mr. Robertson, I actually did attend the Edison, but Mr. Alper was giving his reports, I didn't want to steal his thunder, but I did attend.
I told you he's Mr. PTA.
I attended the, the meeting that Mrs. Menendez, Mrs. Mendez had at Edison, so...
And I do want to say, Ms. Mendez, you're doing a really great job. You didn't just get thrown into the deep end, you got thrown into the ocean. And there were so many things that were already currents of, of change and issues and challenges, many brand new to us that were already happening. Your, your ability to listen, your desire to go out and engage people at all the schools, parents, to engage the staff, and to listen and to be open has, it's, it's made a difference already, and your response time in, in, in addressing things also, well done. I mean, it's a really, really tough job, and it can be thankless unfortunately sometimes, but really appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, the board has deemed it necessary to enter back into executive session where no further action will be taken. So, Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Charles, so, we're going to go back in for the same purpose that we have originally listed on the first confidential.
Okay.
Except for employee number 4290.
Okay.
And are we coming out to do action?
Well, you know what, let's leave it open, just in case we do.
So we may come, we may come.
So we may come back to do action, we don't know.
So, do you want the two of them to stay?
Yes, they're going to have to stay.
Approximately how long will it be in confidential?
About another half hour, forty minutes.
Yeah.
Do you have to read the statement?
No, I think it's clear, we just need to move it, second it, and...
Okay, so, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion when we go into close.
I'll second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're back in executive. Okay, we're back on the record in open, public meeting. The board has just come out of executive session on December 11, 2018. We have one additional item on the personnel to move. It's for Stephen Oskowski. We're going to be moving him from West Orange High School, a position of acting English Language Arts Supervisor. He will be replacing Elizabeth Viziano. Second part of that will be Elizabeth Viziano from West Orange High School to central office as the acting Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Do I have a motion to move that attendant?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any further discussion from the board?
Uh, yeah, it's, I'm sorry.
So, it's two, it's from 12, 12-18 to 1-7-19. That's the effective date.
Right, and 1-7-19, the new board, upon being seated, will then vote from there on the acting positions.
Okay, any further discussion?
None.
Mr. Calavano, let's vote then.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. That concludes our business for the open public meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.